Sorry. We're just got to listen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as for all.
Councillor Boggs, Councillor Dagel, Councillor Whitaker, Councillor Smalley, Councillor Grousman, Councillor Hamilton, Mayor Sumner, all present.
Announcement for Zoom attendees. If you're joining tonight's meeting via Zoom, you will automatically be muted upon entry and you'll need to identify yourself. If your full name is not already attached to the device being used, you will be unable to unmute yourself if you wish to speak using the raver hand feature. Use it on the reactions icon at the bottom of your screen and click on the image of the hand. Public comment. Purpose of this public comment period is to allow citizens to present information or raise issues regarding agenda items only. Timing the end of the meeting for citizens to speak about off agenda items. Time limit of three minutes per citizen shall apply. All citizens must come up to the microphone. Presentation, non-peril water treatment plant inspection update.
Yes, Mayor Sumner, City Council Brian Elliott, Community Health Director. I have Tyler Malator with the Dire Partnership Engineering Planners. He'll be giving one PowerPoint that will consist of both the non-peril water treatment plant construction update and also the wastewater treatment plant one year from today.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. As Mr. Elliott has mentioned, I'll provide a brief update project as well as the wastewater treatment improvement project. So as everybody knows, the non-peril water treatment plant is the city's oldest plant. It's the primary water treatment plant. It's currently undergoing major improvements. Construction project phase of the project was initiated last April and since then, the contractor has been making various improvements to the to the project since that time. Go ahead and advance the slide. So as some as some background, the major improvements consists of intake improvements, raw water pump station, control panel, pumping system, another ancillary improvements, raw water flow meter and static mixer at the water treatment plant, clarifier improvements, filter improvements, new filter media, new filter piping and electronically actuated valves, new backwash pump, new treated water pumps, new backwash basins, electrical equipment and new standby generator as well as a new SCADA system, which essentially a computer-based control system for the entire water treatment plant. So with the extent of the improvements, essentially there are major capital improvements at the water treatment plant with the extent of the work that's being done there. There's times at which the water treatment plant is shut down to facilitate the construction of the improvements. Some of the improvements can be done with plant in operation, but the vast majority of the upgrades have to take place when the plant is shut down. The contract documents identified two major shutdown periods, one which was last year, occurred from approximately April 1st to June 30th in 2021. And then there was another one that was planned for 2022 from March 1st of June 30th, but that was postponed after consultation with contractor and manufacturers. Some of the major pieces of equipment were scheduled to arrive until after the shutdown period. And so the motor control center includes your variable frequency drives and electrical components as well as the main water treatment plant control panel. Those components were scheduled to arrive until July. So obviously, that's critical components of the control upgrade. So the shutdown period that was supposed to happen this year was pushed till 2023, which gives the contractor sufficient time to get all the equipment and all the systems and everything on hand for next year. So with that, we have identified a short shutdown that's currently in process. That's occurring from May 2nd to June 1st, where very limited scope of improvements are taking place at the plant. So this month, they're replacing the raw water pump station piping, so no electrical equipment or no mechanical equipment, just piping as well as the static mixer and flow meter. So a very small, minimal risk type installation is occurring now. So but with that, there still remains a great deal of work that can be done during the non-shut down periods as well. So that's that'll be ongoing throughout the summertime and wear time as well. So work completed to date includes clarifier improvements, go ahead, new backwash basins, new left room, new standby generators. So this was work that was predominantly done last year during the spring of last year as well as over the summer time. Clarifier improvements consists of new tube settlers, which are the white submerged media there in the clarifier as well as new coatings on all the metal material in the clarifier, which was much needed given the condition and rust and degradation that occurred with that. So new coatings and new tube settlers. New backwash basin. So this is prior to the construction of this basin. It was earthen basin, which was difficult for accessibility and maintenance and the sledge removal and whatnot. So this project constructed two large 1,000-1,000- gallon cast-in-place concrete structures to facilitate settling of solids and for solids removal at the plant. And then with the 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 scope upgrades at the plant, there's a new entirely new electrical system, a new control system that's being done. So there's a new electrical room that's associated with that as well as a canopy area. This photo is from the construction base, but it's in process, but essentially there will be a new electrical room with main water treatment plant panel, MCC, all that infrastructure at the plant and then additional blowers for the air scare system to help with particulate removal from the water at the water treatment plant. And then also as part of the the first water treatment plant shutdown, a new 275 KW diesel backup generator with automatic transfer switch was was installed. So that'll replace a very old and outdated unit that had some reliability issues there at the water treatment plant. So upcoming work, which is scheduled for next year now with the with the delay and panel and MCC. So the bulk of improvements will occur next spring. They will insist on the intake improvements, the raw water pumps and panels. And a lot of the the components have to plant itself, filter improvements, new media, new piping, actuated valves, new backwash pump, essentially everything that has not been done to date will be completed next year. The shutdown this 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 month will stop the piping for the raw water pump station, new finished water flow meter and a static mixer for chemical feed systems. So with that, at the wastewater treatment plant, switching gears, wastewater side of things, the wastewater treatment plant was commissioned approximately a year ago. The plant itself has been in, the new plant has been in operation a little bit longer than that. It's been performing as designed. Obviously, there's got discharge permit requirements, but as part of the DEQ funding program, DEQ requires that that after a year in operation, that the consulting engineer review the performance of the plant to ensure that it meets discharge survey requirements. It complies with the design standards. And so for the past month approximately, we visited the site and basically went through each individual process area and evaluated the performance of all of those process areas with respect to the discharge permit and the the permitted design and evaluated that and gave it a rating of either a positive certification or a negative certification. And overall, the plant was given a positive certification. There was no major issues or anything that was identified through that process. So that report was submitted to DEQ just two weeks ago and it's undergoing DEQ review. We do not anticipate any major issues at all. But like I said, the plant's been operation for officially for over a year and performing very well. So with that, are there any questions regarding non-peril or the wastewater plant?
So where the water treatment plant shutdown number two?
Yes.
Will that have any effect on the water flow which like first one did to the city?
No, it will not. Yeah, the first one was definitely, Brian commented a little bit on on that, but there were some delays associated with the the concrete and backwash basin that were unexpected, but with postponing the this particular shutdown and making sure the contractor has all the material on hand and ready to go, there are no concerns related to water shortages. Yeah, and obviously, there's always the that factor that plays into the in the demand and whatnot. Yeah, this year there is not an issue, but the majority of work is being done next year.
Councillor Boggs, Councillor Dagel, Councillor Whitaker, Councillor Smalley, Councillor Grousman, Councillor Hamilton, Mayor Sumner. Motion carries.
The government's bid award, Everett and six repair project.
Mayor Council. As you know, we've been working on doing that project engineer. We put it down a month ago, a little more than that. On April 27th, we opened bids and you only received two. We feel good about the competitive bid that we got from JRT Construction in the amount of $449,055. We're a capable company. They beat all the requirements. We've worked with them before. They beat Knight River by considerable amount. So I'd like to suggest an open approval of the awards, the other construction LLC in the amount of $449,055 for whatever you see. I moved that we approved the bid award to JRT Construction in the amount of $449,055 for whatever.
Forget to think that we had it.
Move to the second. Any discussion?
There's a couple of items here where the engineers that's in that's our guy. Like on item number 225, temporary work zone traffic. Our engineers on 135, JRT is at 46,000 and and Knight River is 104. Why is there such a big discrepancy in what we expect over what they're going to do? And I have another one probably be answering that same way on that further down construction survey work, $9,000 engineer estimate. And I don't know if these are pre-pandemic numbers, so that JRT at 19,000 and then Knight River at 10,000. Numbers like those that are off from our estimates between these contractors, what's the deal?
The answer is, I don't know. With the with the pandemic and the way things are now, they're just, it's, everything's crazy, up and down. You'll notice that there are some, if you read them all, where he overestimated, some he underestimated. That the temporary work zone.
Several hundred dollars or even a few thousand dollars, but when you're talking more than triple.
Right? Right. Well, I mean, I would look at the overalls, overall engineer's estimate. You know, the guy came in and, you know, he beat that by what 50,000 roughly.
And that's the only reason why I I'll go with that. There has to be a reason. He could be considered glorified as.
Knight River has a history of bidding a lot on temporary work zone. They they've put a lot of energy into flaggers and lots of them and they're usually, on all of our bids that we get, they're quite a bit higher on that particular item. I recognize that both of them are higher than than our engineer's estimate and I don't have a good answer for you there. I could ask him about his methodology and get back to you, but I I don't know what he what how he figured that exactly. So I recognize there are some wild fluctuations there between his estimate and both bidders, but but overall. Right.
I'm just shocked that they're so much higher.
Yeah, yeah. Well, they opened that one first and it worried me because we were going to be higher than, but then JRT came in very competitively and and so. They want to start as soon as possible. Just got an email today, but they, we haven't awarded them the bid yet or had the pre-con, pre-construction meeting because we haven't, because we have to have you guys, so we do not have a a date, but I anticipate it will be, it'll be coming right up there. They're ready to go. So I don't know exactly, but within two to three weeks, I would.
Councillor Boggs, Councillor Dagel, Councillor Whitaker, Councillor Smalley, Councillor Grousman, Councillor Hamilton, Mayor Sumner, motion carries. On the consent.
Bid award IT services staff report.
Mayor and councillors, Tammy Trowbridge, Finance Director. I have managed IT services agreement to present to you here as part of my internal system review. One of the things that snuck up on well surprised me last year as we were coming into budget and all the other things was the insurance renewal was also coming up. And so I went through that with our insurance agent and they let me know that there was an increased risk, of course, in the cybercrime area and insurance in that arena has skyrocketed. We actually have a separate insurance policy right now outside of CIS, who does all of our other liability and professional umbrella services and things. Because CIS wasn't really supporting much of an insurance pool in that area. But in going through the application, which was significant, it made me realize that this is a huge area of risk and they're putting a huge area, a huge amount of weight on your answers to their questions. And so I have been focusing on that as we come into renewal season. And as part of my internal systems reviews, I realized that we don't have a current service agreement with the IT consultant that has been working for us for 25 years. The last one we had was in November 2011, as the staff report says, and it was for a three-year initial term. And there was also a three-year extension clause. So that hasn't been addressed for a while. And also the scope of that agreement was much different. Just think about being 11 years old, you know, than it is now, the things that are required now. So as cybercrime is an emerging threat, you know, we're governments especially are being targeted for ransomware attacks, email hacking, serious insurance issue. So as you see, I've got in there, I put out an RFP for managed IT services and ran that open for two weeks. We had several inquiries, one firm requested a facility walkthrough all of our facilities and one firm requested a conference call. That firm ended up not being certified in the LEDs, the law enforcement for Oregon, so they were not able to complete respond to this this year. They talked about being able to maybe next year. And so only one bid was received from a Roseburg firm as referenced, and I have checked their references. They have glowing references from both public, nonprofit and private people. The city abandoned, they support them, they love them, Douglas ESD, Green Area Water Sanitary, Tri-City Water and Sanitary Authority, Southhampton School District, several school districts, Oregon Department of Transportation, one of their branches, and then they listed, you know, a dozen private and nonprofit folks and had great reference letters. Anyway, I would, the options are to either award the managed IT services to SysTech Consulting as presented or not to award it. I want you to know that I did an analysis on the hours that we have used in IT service over the past year. And that ranged from, you know, like 50 plus the month over a year ago that we did the, we had a CGIS audit, so a law enforcement, police department audit. That was a very laborious task for them, but it generally ranges from 10 to 25 hours, 10 to 30 hours per month, depending on our projects, depending on what we're doing. And for me, that position, if we were to think about hiring a position, that's not enough to keep somebody busy. Now, we have certain people in each department that are kind of IT savvy, that can kind of come in as the first wave of intervention, right? If we have something that's fairly light duty, we have several people identified for that and they are on board with that. But, you know, these IT services people are prepared, they have remote access into our computers, some of our concerns they can fix in 10 minutes. You know, it just is not that difficult, but these people are taking it to a new level. They're going to be sending phishing emails to our employees to see if we're biting on those scam emails. I mean, you know, they're really doing some managed and proactive things. And so options are, I, the suggested motion, of course, is that we award that service agreement to SysTech. Questions, comments?
One thing that I saw when I recruited us in this year.
We need them. Yeah.
Good point.
I'll make a motion that we accept the award of the IT services to SysTech. Well, the biggest problem with cybersecurity, cybersecurity is that they steal all of your information and then they want to charge you back. And I noticed in here that there's double backup system, they back it up offsite, but they also back it up to the cloud. So if somebody steals our stuff because they access our computers, there there's two sites that have our complete backup of all the security. Are you thinking? I have a question. No, you're only allowed one, one for each. They talked about providing items like the Microsoft 365 business and that to the desktops and so forth. Nowhere in this state of the world can you say anything about tablets or anything like that?
We made, I made a complete listing of the units we have to support. And so they saw a complete list of our email list. So right now we have like 77 email addresses that are currently on a Microsoft 365 subscription. And so they're just talking about instead of those subscription services coming through at different times on different credit cards and me having to manage that and figure out which ones are on the credit card and which ones are being renewed through the consultant, those kind of things. They will make sure they're all taken care of and that's included in our monthly fee. Absolutely. Yes.
Sorry, you're anything else? Just a clarification, is it our routers and so forth from the dark fiber on or are they installing their hard?
Well, they're going to come in with a few things and upgrade some of our things to a certain level. So there's an initial, you know,
As far as the initial.
Part of the initial thing, here they come, they bring in things, so everything, you know, if they, yes. So if they have a problem with something, they know what kind of router it is and they have one to replace it and they've got the cabling able nailed down and that kind of thing. They just come in and make sure it's at the level to where they can do a good job of servicing it.
And it's a setup and a new user edit and a new existing user server. That's directed by a certain party and I propose that.
Yes, yes. So all of those users are managed through me.
Sidebar, I'm not. Now, there was a fixed rights and that's what I saw confusing. It said dependent on, it was for a fixed number of hours. But I never saw the hours.
It's the 10, there's 10 hours of managing in that initial press. Because they consider with the number of devices that I gave them, that that should be sufficient.
Okay, so it'd be 10 hours per month.
Over and above the normal patches and the things that they're expecting to have to do on those devices.
Additional.
Yes.
Okay. And then if they have any new devices and so forth, they add 25 per device. And then the consulting rate is another 25 to 30. What is that? And that was on page 28. You might just look at it, page 28 and the managing service rates.
A minute, I've got it here somewhere.
Go into it now, but the next item says this proposal improved and fixed set of management service hours allocated to pilot. And that's where I was looking at it. So where is the hours?
I may have given you the one where the hours were cut off. I may have given you the one where the hours were cut off.
It was never, it was page 28, you're way under.
Excuse me. Can I get back to you on that? I, I will clarify and make sure that those rates.
So that we have all of our teams cross and tied up. But that's, that's why.
You just have to ask her, do we have all our teams across and tied up? She'll say yes. Okay, do I have, do we have all the teams?
Right, exactly. I feel very comfortable with these folks. I've met their team, I feel like they're very professional. And we'll do a great talk.
That's all I had, I couldn't find the hours.
And I have had, well, we're using our personal services agreement and Chad has reviewed it, so.
Also.
So is it kind of a saving from our previous?
I would think that our costs are going to be about the same, looking at the past year, they'll be about the same.
It just seems, I probably, I always knew, and I didn't realize, it was so long.
I didn't either.
Wow. And I always knew it was expensive. But when you see 5,600 a month, it's like, yeah, it's 10 hours.
Right, well, so you got, you got to remember. At least 1,250, that is just the subscriptions to, you know, the ongoing Sonic wall, wall renewals and Microsoft 365 and those kind of things. So that, that takes that off of there. And then they're doing things in the background that necessarily aren't part of that 10 hours. Right, I think that's exactly right. Because when I went back and inventoried that, I was very surprised at the cost, yes.
And they're also managing assets and doing maintenance and so forth. Are you done? I'm sorry.
No, I wasn't.
I surrender to you.
My other comment was, I think at some point we do need to think about hiring somebody, even if it's part-time. There are people who just want to work part-time. But I think we're getting up there because the little bit of, that I did with some of the wages on LOC and what they are per year, we were still under that.
Well, I will say that that is a consideration. Being fairly new in city government, government at all, one of the most expensive things you have is labor. Because it's not just your wages, it's the additional load, your benefits are so incredible. So, yes, a part-time person, maybe, but IT folks are very hard to manage. I'm just saying. They are very hard to manage, yes, yes. And Jerry and I are having a great time working that out. I don't know how many of those relationships you can handle at once.
You also have a level of knowledge and expertise that is always being advanced that a person sometimes may not be ready to.
And their documentation, they have guaranteed me that their documentation in terms of our systems will be done, you know, if, if the time comes that we want to part ways with them, we want to hire somebody, whatever, they will be able to just hand me a notebook with everything you would need to do that. That's a really good feeling. And I believe that this is going to, taking this up to the next level, is going to allow us to secure cybercrime insurance at the level that we need going forward and the protection. I mean, it's just a great feeling to know that they're going to be training our staff and, and doing some things that we haven't had an opportunity to do up to this point.
No, we have a motion, oh, I'm sorry, there. We have a motion.
Wait, let's do it in a second, as soon as discussion's done, we're raising the vote.
But was that for a three-year that we're going to call a five-year?
Five-year.
Five-year, okay.
Counselor Boggs, Counselor Dagel, Counselor Whitaker, Counselor Smalley, Counselor Grossman, Counselor Hamilton, Mayor Sumner, motion carries. Good evening, Mayor and Councilors, Diane Harris, City Recorder. We recently received an application for our Parks Advisory Committee. We had one vacancy on that and we had Tabitha Layman actually attended a Parks meeting, our last Parks meeting, and brought her children. And she discussed maybe upgrading the skate park, different things, and they encouraged her to apply for the Parks Committee and she did. She's a 35-year resident of the city and I did contact her.
There you are, yay.
Yay, she's ready. So we've got, staff is asking council to consider her application. This carries a term ending of December 31st, 2023 also. Yes.
So, yeah, I've looked here, I've looked here for 35 years and my parents were a small business owner, so to be popular with me now, like we're starting, so I've been contributing to the business community as well. Lots of volunteer experience from Rotary to Festival Lights and several other organizations. Each has six, eight, 12, and almost 15, who are an active part of this community. And I just want to help continue the great job that's already happening and bring some new ideas to the field. I can see you guys coming through an application. Any questions that I can? Yeah, appreciate your volunteering, thank you.
Oh my gosh.
Mace Leiva is my big sister as well.
That motion.
That motion, very cool. And Tabitha Layman, of the President of the City, December 31st, 2023.
I got grass.
I've known her my whole life, I think she's great at this position.
Counselor Boggs, Counselor Dagel, Counselor Whitaker, Counselor Smalley, Counselor Grossman, Counselor Hamilton, Mayor Sumner, motion carries.
Strategic plan update, new way for our team to plan one-year performance report.
That, that was included in Tyler's earlier.
Then we'll move on to new sidewalks from Grove Lane to Nicholas Court update.
Yeah, do you remember?
Yeah, I just wanted to give you, Mayor, Council, just wanted to give you an update. So it's currently being engineered. And our engineering is going to engineer it from Grove right now all the way to the end of town, a little bit past Wayland Run. And then also they're going to engineer on the north side, coming back from that point to Opal. On Central, yes, ma'am. And that should be done, that job will be complete, the engineering portion will be complete during this fiscal year. So right around the end of June, it will be done. Based on the engineers' estimate, then we're going to go out to bid on that. I'm not sure exactly how much we're going to be able to get completed in this upcoming fiscal year. I think we're going to make it to past Nicholas for sure in that. But once we get past there, it's a lot more complicated. The road bank is tall and, and steep and there's some drainage issues. And so we have to wait till. This summer, this construction season. So that's kind of where we're at and yeah, that's the, yeah. Just a bit past Quail to take in the, was the, the end of the. Nicholas is just a point, so right now we're at Grove, South Grove. And the next phase segment, if you will, would be from, from South Grove, just past Nicholas, even. So right there, that would be a kind of a cutoff point, just a point where it's kind of simple, everyday sidewalks. But once you get past there, that's when we end up with the deep ditches and more fill and just more complications.
Well, but you were talking about engineering, so you're going to actually engineer it all the way out.
All the way, the whole thing, yep.
Yes, ma'am. I want to take a moment, I think that's all it will be. I, I do want to take a moment though, I don't know if you know the, there's some posties in the state where they're outstanding. Joe Grossman was awarded the man of the year award this last year. And as much guff as I give him, it's well deserved. But you just stop and think about it. Before him, there was Counselor Boggs. Before Counselor Boggs, there was, there was Larry Whitaker. Before Larry Whitaker, there was Gary Dagel. And you've all received awards or nominations for your leadership in the community. And I just think that's to be commended. Now, Sean's always got some big shoes to fill because he hasn't done biddly squat. Someday he'll get that. I know it's in today. Yeah, we had a great time. I, I also want to talk about another important member of the city family was awarded. And Sue Gillum, by the way, was awarded the president's award. And so particularly proud of that. I, I also want to have a conversation with you to let you know that as we've moved forward on these businesses and art businesses in Southern, that we've been talking about for quite some time, we're starting to, starting to take action now. We're at a point of setting the power off in one building and having everybody in the opening hall. But now we're getting to a point where we're going to be issuing a thousand dollar day fines to some of these businesses who haven't even responded or in fact refused to even come in and talk to us. And so I want you to know that it's going to be happening, there might be some, you know, I just want to make sure you're all okay with us proceeding with that. We're going to put the attorney and staff moving on that this next month. So I just want you all to be aware of it so there's no surprises. We've done it 100 times. In fact, Brian just talked on that. Yeah. Okay, we'll send you out. There's not a lot of them, but there are some key ones in downtown that boarded up fronts, should be an active retail business. The residential is and has always been a secondary element. And that's not what's happening. And so we're investing hundreds of thousands of dollars in getting all these buildings rehabbed. And we've worked with them and worked with them and worked with them and worked with them to no avail. And so at some point, you either mean what you say and follow the code or the code doesn't matter. But at the same time, I don't want to do it and have you be upset in doing that because we are down the same page on a team doing this together. Yeah.
I may have got a lot of warnings. I think if you keep going forward. I agree that they've got it all to rule, but it's the same, I'd like to see, the only job is by going to the bottom. And trying to find a solution. The office can come here and stay here.
No one's going to tell me if you can't do it, I think this one's going to come to you.
Well, the game, yeah, well, it's a scheme, we're not coming. You know, the truth is, and I said that when you tried interviewing me, was that, you know, if I don't build a building, I'd have to be those customers, but I'm not that talented. I know that's a more positive thought, but.
It's good.
Probably have to have a business, you don't have a patient who has been a horse. And when it's actually direct, strong, that's what you.
If you notice, the ones that have. And I can have this, this right next to you that looks like someone's storing things in like a craft.
Well, I understand, and I think there's a way to handle that too. Just a second, I think we're going to be short on people occupying the place. Jerry, we also have said that they need to be open certain hours and know about these. We have businesses that are out doing that, but they're living upstairs or behind. And that's all it is, is a cheap apartment for that.
Yeah, that's true. Not all businesses rely on needing to open a covered customer. I don't, I don't have customers in the library, because everything I use online, so thank you, I'll never. Yeah, you know. Well, I think the bottom line is that
We need to remind council.
That was approved, that says you can't live in your business unless. Speaking of your microphones, I think we've got detection from somebody in there.
Okay, well.
In the audience.
The rule exists, the statute exists that you, if you're going to, if you're going to have a business, you have, the business has to be open. And if you're going to live in the building that the businesses, business occupies, then 50% of that building has to be used for a business, it's open for business. I mean, that's the rule. So, you know, just because we would like to have people in the buildings and it's okay if they've brought up the windows, that, that doesn't work. That's disobeying the law. And I think that we need to be a law by each. Well, if I might add, I think, I hate to give them credit, but Counselor Grossman was right in the way. This is a downtown retail in entire existence with design and intended for front door retail business. And when we brought in a diesel, a diesel repair facility in. And when we brought in a diesel, a diesel repair facility in downtown Southern, they had to follow a whole lot of hoops and do some major remodeling and fix up and adhere to standards and protocols to be downtown. And they've been a great, great member of downtown. And they follow the rules of doing what they're supposed to be doing. And they did it exactly as it were. And that's all we're asking them to do. If you want to be in a Main Street environment, then you must have a Main Street business. Housing is secondary to that. And if you, if you have a business that is like yours or somebody else's, there are other zones you can go into that more, more than willing to accommodate that. So I think that's really the point at the end of the day.
You can say more when it goes around.
Remember, meeting time is limited. Please ask questions or statements that are likely to benefit the group, individual comments and questions that can be handled on a one-on-one basis should be handled outside meetings. Counselor Boggs.
99 down to 135. I don't know, it's probably because of all these dump trucks that have been running up the road over the last few months. That's two or three model for really developing. I know it's county, but you might start fucking up things soon. And then Jerry, just in almost 30 years since working in my government, I know a lot of finance directors that have moved up to city manager's position. I don't know of any city managers that have been able to fill their. So I concur with that.
You had a huge kudo.
I, I used to be here at one point. But. Yes. Oh, thank you. Other than that.
We had a conversation today, actually two conversations. So what I can say is the second conversation was that there's four people currently in there. They are supposed to be out today and. Supposed to be tomorrow, Friday, what's the plan? That's September. They've had 20.
If we don't keep that moving and for sales, I'm literally going to change your business.
They're supposed to be coming in on either Thursday or Friday with a potential.
Here. No, please don't.
First, I want to congratulate two grandpas.
Yes.
Brian and.
Like a week, a week between them.
I want to congratulate Joe and Sue. Pass that on. It was a very nice dinner at what's it called? It was packed, so there were split attendants. I want to thank the library staff and crew. Unfortunately, very many of them, but they had it so lovely and they did a great job. And then I want to thank Larry for your Saturday Arbor Day. Between the rain and between soccer. We didn't have very many people either, but your effort is applauded. So I'm hoping next year we'll be better. And Michelle for talking there. I guess that's all I have. Some of mine were taken too.
FFA, yes. FFA dinner Wednesday night, if anyone. But I would like to thank you, the event on Saturday morning for the Arbor Day celebration was really nice. You did a great job putting it together. I thought it was well done. I'm sorry that we didn't have more people. And I enjoyed it very well. And the people that did have sent the runs were great. Nice turnout with the errors that came for the food trucks that came and the Oakland singers. Speakers, everybody. So I think it's a good event. That will continue to get better and better. Keep your. Thank you. Congratulations. Public comment. The purpose of public comment is to allow citizens to debate regarding items off the agenda. Time limit of three minutes for citizen shall apply. And at this time, we will adjourn. And I do have one announcement. We will take a five-minute break before the Urban Renewal Agency goes into executive session called under ORS 192.6602E, Real Property Transactions to Deliverate the Footprints Designated by the Governing Body to Negotiate Real Property Transactions. Representatives of the news media shall be allowed to attend executive sessions other than those held under section 2E of this section related to real property transactions. Designated staff are allowed to attend executive sessions. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room.